Please rise, ladies and gentlemen. The 16th Sangguniangpanlalawigan is now convened for its 14th regular session. Honorable Vice Governor Adeline M. Angelas presiding.
The 14th regular session of the 16th Sangguniangpanlalawigan of this province is now called to order. Requesting Honorable Valdomero Limpiada of the Liga ng mga barangay to please lead the invocation to be followed by national anthem.
Let us pray in the name of the Father, of the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Our Father in heaven, who guides the destiny of men and nations, we implore the guidance of the divine providence and the Holy Spirit to assist us in our task and in the proceedings of this chamber, that we shall be faithful in our mandate for the welfare of the people. We ask you to bless and enlighten the members of the Sangguniangpanlalawigan in all they do for the common good and for the welfare of our province and the nation in general. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen. In the name of the Father, of the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you. Requesting our good secretary to please call the roll.
Honorable Mark Julius Picaballes, Honorable Aurelio J. Leva III, Honorable Antonio L. Mangkukang III, Honorable Bernardin Opis Mercado, Honorable Melgabar R. Inkabo, Honorable Mercedes Arihano, Honorable Danilo R. Red, Honorable Ismael Dipilim, Honorable Jose Neril Elmangol, Honorable Valdomero Limpiada, Honorable Loren Arrosales. Madam Presiding Officer, with ten members of the board present, we have the necessary quorum for this morning's session.
Thank you very much, Sir James. With the ten members of this August body present, the Chair declares the presence of quorum. We can proceed with the order of business, recognizing our floor leader.
Thank you very much, Honorable Presiding Officer. For the reading and adoption of the minutes of the previous session, may I move that we dispense with the reading of the minutes and put these are the same as having been read without prejudice to the submission of corrections, clarification from the members of the board. I so move.
Is there any objection to the motion of the floor leader for the reading of the minutes of October 7, 2022 session to be dispensed with without prejudice to the correction? There seems to be no objection. And proceed, Honorable Leva.
Inviting members of the board to have some corrections and clarification to the minutes of the session dated October 7, 2022.
Is there any correction from the floor? The Chair sees no one who has correction, is manifesting correction. What is the pleasure of the floor leader?
Madam Presiding Officer, may I move that we adopt and approve the minutes of the 13th regular session dated October 7, 2022. I so move.
There is a motion from Honorable Leva, Julie seconded by Honorable Mangkukang for the adoption of the minutes of October 7, 2022 session without correction. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The minutes of our October 7, 2022 session is now adopted without correction.
Honorable Presiding Officer, for the matters arising from the minutes, inviting members of the board who have some matters arising from the minutes to be recognized. May this representation be recognized, Madam Presiding Officer?
Proceed, Honorable Leva.
With regard to the resolution adopted by the August body last session with regards to the request to the Department of Public Works and Highways to find permanent solution to the perennial problem of flooding during heavy rainfall, may I ask for reconsideration that we amend the same by including to the resolution barangay Sawi and barangay Tampus, so that the resolution will be read as follows: A resolution is requesting the Department of Public Works and Highways to find permanent solution to the perennial problem of flooding during heavy rainfall along the Marinduque-Ceremcooperantial Road, National Roads, including those located in Prokiyaya Dos, barangay Laylay, barangay Bangmangalon, barangay Sawi, and barangay Tampus, both in the municipality of Wak, this province. This is an offshoot of the public hearing conducted yesterday.
Okay, there is a motion from the floor leader to reconsider portion of the resolution that we adopted during the previous session. As mentioned, is there any second to that? Julie seconded. Any objection? The Chair hears none thus the request for the motion for reconsideration, specifically to include Sawi and Tampus in the resolution mentioned by the floor leader that was adopted last session is now approved.
For the approval amendment of agenda, Madam Presiding Officer, we have two privileged speeches for today's session, four items for the messages and correspondence from the office of the Governor, adding one messages and correspondence from the Governor certified as urgent. This is with regards to the request for the passage of an ordinance authorizing to initiate expropriation proceedings before the RTC against the owners of lots who rejected the offer of deed of absolute sale with PGM relative to airport extension and expansion project. For the communications and petitions, we have four items. For the municipal ordinance for the review of the board, we have two items with two sub-items for item number two. We have four committee reports. Actually, it's four of committee reports. We have one item for the business for the day, two items for the business for the day, and Madam Presiding Officer, may I move for the approval of the agenda as amended. I so move.
There is a motion from the floor leader, also the Chair of the Committee on Rules, for the approval of today's agenda with only one inclusion, which is the certified urgent item from the Governor with regard to the filing of expropriation case at the RTC for the owners of some lots who refuse to accept the offer. Is there any second to... anyway, it's coming from the Committee on Rules. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is carried. The motion is approved.
Madam Presiding Officer, for the privileged hour, may I ask to recognize the gentle lady from Wak for a privileged speech.
The Honorable Bernardin Opis Mercado is recognized for the privileged speech.
Marami pong salamat sa ating majority floor leader at Vice Governor, Linang Hiles. Isang mapagpalang araw po sa ating lahat. Noong nakalipas na mga araw ay may magulang pong lumapit sa inyong lingkod upang idulog ang problema tungkol sa hindi pagbibigay ng 20% discount na mga pampublikong sasakyan, particular ang jeep na biyahe ng buwak Santa Cruz at Santa Custuriho sa mga pasahero, kagaya na mga estudyante, senior citizen, at maging sa mga PWDs. Ano sabing pagbibigay ng diskwentong ito ay nasasaad sa Republic Act #9442 to provide persons with disabilities the opportunity to participate fully into the mainstream of society by granting them at least 20% discount in all basic services, and Republic Act #11314, an act institutionalizing the grant of student fair discount privilege on public transportation and for other purposes. On the other hand, LTFRB's Memorandum Circular #2017-024 granted a fair discount for students but only for land transportation, including jeepneys, buses, UB Express One, taxis, and TNVs, while Memorandum Circular #2017-024 allowed students to avail of the fair discount even on weekends, holidays, and breaks. May meron din pong LTFRB MC 2005-014 o ang fair discount na ibinibigay para sa mga senior citizens na may kapansanan at estudyante. According to LTFRB, currently those who fail to grant the 20% discount will face 5,000 pesos penalty for the first offense. Repeat offenders will have their unit impounded for 30 days and the operator will be fined 10,000 pesos. Those who violate for the third time will slap a 15,000 pesos fine and have their franchise canceled. Isang malaking tulong sa mga sektor ng senior citizens, PWDs, at sa mga estudyante ang mabigyan sila ng 20% discount sa mga pampasaheron jeep, higit lalo na sa mga magulang na kinakapo sa panustos para sa pangangailangan sa pag-aaral ng kanilang mga anak. Ginagapang nilang makapagtapos ang kanilang mga anak kahit hirap sa buhay at ang ilan pa sa magulang ay may dalawa hanggang tatlong mga anak na sabay na nag-aaral sa kolehiyo, kaya mabigat sa kanila kung hindi man lang makadiskont sa pamasahe. Malaking tulong ang diskwentong maibibigay ito ng tama dahil mahal po ang pamasahe ngayon dahilan na rin sa taas ng gasolina. Buwak Santa Cruz ay 70 pesos at ang biyaheng Santa Custuriho ay 70 pesos. Sumatotal ay 100 pesos ang nagagastos ng estudyante kumanggagaling pa sa buwak ang papasok ng MSC Turihos. Ang matitipid na discount ay pwede ng food allowance ng mga bata. Ganun pa man, kung mataas ang gasolina ay hindi ito rason upang ipagkait ang nararapat na 20% discount na pamasahe sa mga senior citizens, PWDs, at mag-aaral. Akin pong hinihiling sa akin mga ginagalang na kasamahan na mabigyan pansin at gawa ng agarang aksyon ang hinahing ng ilan sa ating mamamayan ng Marinduke pa tungkol sa pagbibigay ng discount sa pamasahe para sa may kapansanan senior citizens at mga estudyante. Naais ko pong mai-refer ang aking privilehim pananalita sa nararapat na committee ang Committee on Transportation upang maipatawag ang mga drivers ng pampasaheron jeep na aking nabanggit at mapakinggan ang kanilang paliwanag ukol dito sa reklamo na ipinarating sa atin. Muli po, maraming salamat po.
Madam Chair, for the calendar of business, we don't have any unfinished business for the business for the day. The first item in the business for the day is a proposed ordinance #1610 for second reading. May I ask to recognize the sponsoring committee, the chairperson of the Committee on Appropriation.
Madam Chair, it is the pleasure of this representation that proposed ordinance #1610 entitled "An Ordinance Providing 2 Million Pesos Financial Assistance to the Six Component Municipalities in the Province of Marinduke to Support Their Respective Education-Related Infrastructure Programs, Projects, Providing Guidelines in Abailment Thereof and for Other Related Purposes." As it is now being considered for second reading, we open for any interpolation or deliberation, Madam Chair.
With that, any interpolation from the August body, Honorable Mercy Rehano?
Good afternoon to everybody. May I know from the proponent whether... Sa amendment po doon sa assistance to the six component municipalities, 'yung pumagang every municipality ay two, three to two million, two million lamang or 'yung doon sa anim, or every municipality ay mayroon 2 million? Clarification lamang po. Nung ano, nung...
Madam Presiding Officer?
Yes, Honorable Red?
Magandang katanungan po 'yung kay Bukal Rehano. Ito po ay 2 million every municipality. 12 million every municipality. 2 million, 2 million.
12 million for the entire Marinduke. Okay, Paul. Yes, any other interpolation, any other clarificatory question, query? With that, what is the pleasure of the sponsoring committee chair?
Madam Chair, there being no other clarificatory questions or any interpolation from the other members of the August body, I now move that we close the period for interpolation.
The period for interpolation is closed. Proceed, Honorable Caballes.
Madam Chair, with the conclusion of the period of interpolation, it is the pleasure of this representation that proposed ordinance #1610 be now open for any amendment, Madam Chair.
Yes, at this point, recognizing Honorable Mercy Rehano for the proposed amendment.
Okay, good afternoon po. Maybe specified po natin Mr. Proponent, 'yung amount of 'yung 2 million ay every municipality or it must be each municipality ay 2 million. Which is which?
2 million every municipality.
Kung approb... Which section are you referring po?
Title pa lang.
Sa title, and the amendment, specified na po natin kung magkano talaga ang every municipality.
2 million financial assistance per municipality. Instead of to the six, to the six component municipalities.
Alam namang po natin na six municipalities ito. So, dapat specified na natin kung magkano 'yung every municipality.
Okay, yes, in addition to that, Honorable Leva?
May I paraphrase the amendment that being asked for by the Honorable Rehano, may the title be amended as follows: "An Ordinance Providing 2 Million Financial Assistance to Each of the Six Component Municipalities in the Province of Marinduke to Support Their Response Education-Related respective education-related infrastructure projects, programs, providing guidelines in the abailment thereof and for other related purposes."
Does it capture, Honorable Rehano? So, there is a proposed insertion of the phrase "each of" in between "to" and "the" in the title. Is the proponent amenable to the amendment?
Yes, Madam.
Honorable Red, thank you. So, is there any other proposed amendment? Yes, Honorable Leva?
I wish to amend the sponsor that it should be authored by Honorable Daniel Red and sponsored by the Committee on Education and the Committee on Appropriation.
Okay, thank you. And maybe that should always be the arrangement. Author is whoever introduce it. If it is still a proposed measure, then he or she is still just introduced by. When it is approved, then the author is the person who introduced it. And the sponsor will always be the chair and the members of the sponsoring committees unto which the matter or the legislative measure is referred to.
Thank you.
Thank you for that consideration.
May I also again introduce another amendment that we introduce a new section to be known as Section 1 with short title. This ordinance shall be known as the 2M4 Ed. Ordinance of 2022 of the Province of Marinduke.
That will be Section 1 po?
Yes, that will be.
And Section 1 will be Section 2?
And Section 1 will be renumbered as Section 2 and subsequently the numbers. Is that acceptable to the sponsor? Okay lang po, Madam Presiding. Okay, thank you.
So, the Section 1 will be the title, reiteration of the short title of the ordinance? Tama po ba?
Yes.
Madam Chair, can we do the amendment verbatim, meaning uh, section by section, so that will be guided?
Please proceed, Paul.
Yes, yes. Can the distinguished author read per section? Or we will just mention section, then if there is amendment to that section, then there, let it be?
Okay.
So, papa sa inilang.
With regard to Section 1?
Section 1, appropriation of fund. Uh, Section 2?
But the, the Section 1?
Again consistent, Madam Chair.
Can you just mention the, the proposed uh...
Yes, amendment.
Uh, Section 1 that was already accepted by Bokal Red?
Yes, uh, Section 1, which is now Section 2, is uh, also being amended in uh, consonance with the title. There is hereby allocated in the 20% development fund of the provincial government of Marinduke an annual financial assistance of 2 million for each municipality of the, for each of the six municipalities. That is, uh, Section 1.
That's Section 2 po.
Section 2 na siya.
So, pakibanggit niyo lang po muna 'yung Section 1 na.
Aa, a- a- original.
'Yung, 'yung pong inintroduce ninyo na pinayagan po ni Bokal Red to be included.
Uh, the Section 1 is short title, this ordinance shall be known as 2M4 Ed. Ordinance of the Mon- Province of Marinduke, of 2022 of the Province of Marinduke.
'Yun po ang magiging Section 1.
That will be Section 1. Okay, accepted the...
'Yung appropriation of fund po, Section 2?
Appropriation of fund. There is hereby allocated in the 20% development fund of the Province of Mar- Provincial Government of Marinduke an annual financial assistance of 2 million pesos for each, for uh, for each of the six municipal, component municipalities of the province to support their respective education-related infrastructure projects, period.
So, there is again an amendment, uh, by inclusion of the free term?
Each of.
Each of the?
Each of the.
Each municipality.
Okay, Paul. So, yes, Honorable Red, for Section 3, meron po bang pagbabago?
Uh, Section 3, lalabas ng Section 3 'tong Section 2, no? Guidelines for availability?
Or, or kung okay po sa inyo, 'yun na lang pong mga ilang pagbabago, please use the line numbers as reference.
Yes, Paul.
So, meron pa po ba na pagbabago, line 4, okay, for, for Section 1 that covers line 23 to, uh, Section 3? That in the draft covers from line 23 to?
Forty-four, two seventy-three.
Two seventy-three. Meron po bang proposed amendment?
Any, any recommendations or suggestion for the amendment?
May pagbabago pa po ba sa Section 3? Kung wala na po, let's proceed to Section, Section 4.
Seventy-six-two.
Originally, Section 3 pero magiging Section 4?
Seventy-six-two.
From line seventy-six to?
Eighty-eight po. Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight. Meron po bang pagbabago? I know we are already in the amendment p- uh, period po, ano, pero paano po 'yung pro- uh, di ko, paano po 'yung uh, uh, pagi-insure that it is included in the AIP of the province?
Uh, maganu na po, uh...
Line? Thirty-six. Shall be included in the province annual investment program. So, it must be, ano, so ibig sabihin po, may advance, advance submission sila nung projects for consideration in the annual investment program. Yes, we are already in Section 4 po.
Section 4 na?
Section 4, line seventy-six to eighty-eight of the...
Can we add another, uh, ano, uh, another, uh, uh, number 4? For administration building, as it was noted during the committee hearing that uh, 20% uh, development cannot be used for administrative uh, building purposes? Uh, number 4, as uh, uh, item number 4 under Section 3. For use as administrative building?
Okay.
For offices?
Okay po ba ito sa proponent? Maliban po dun sa tatlong binanggit na kung saan hindi pwedeng gamitin 'yung pong financial assistance from the province. Number 4 prohibition is 'yung pagamit nung fund para sa building, administrative building at offices. It is, it will be prohibited. Okay po ba 'yun sa proponent?
Okay po.
So, that will be an addition, number 4 under Section 4. Any amendment po for Section 4? Uh, now Section 5? Originally, Section 4, line ninety-one to one oh-nine.
Project implementation. Any, any comments? Or suggestion?
Yes, Honorable Lim?
Uh, Madam Chair, I uh, I, I have no uh, objection to, to the measure. I, I, I uh, I appreciate the uh, the initiative of Honorable, uh, Honorable Daniel Red, and uh, with due respect to the author of uh, the ordinance, could, could we make this, uh, if uh, uh, if uh, he would allow, could we make this a little uh, 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 formal or uh, as uh, we usually craft our ordinances? Because as I am uh, browsing the ordinance, the, the proposed ordinance, there are no, uh, our usual uh, format of uh, uh, ordinances. There are no, uh, of, of course, there's a title, there's the authority, there's the scope, there is the...
So, ano pong section ang gusto niyong i-introduce?
If I may uh, introduce, Honorable Red, some uh, some preliminaries to the ordinance, like in Section 1, uh, this shall be known as blah blah blah, number 2, authority, where did you get the authority?
Uh, the, the, the context.
Yes, at least we must cite the...
The context, oo, the rationale.
The local government code.
Declaration of policy.
The declaration of policy.
Okay.
And uh, uh, at least we must cite the local government code as uh, the authority wherein which you derived your, your uh, authority to, to create such an ordinance.
Okay, Paul.
Can we have the preliminaries here, Madam Chair, if uh, it is okay with the Honorable, with the author?
Meron po.
Okay lang po, uh, Madam Presiding.
Okay po. So, gusto ni, uh, you are proposing uh, to include a, a section on the declaration of policy?
Declaration of policy, title, declaration of policy.
The legal basis and then the objectives, the objectives.
That is correct, Madam Chair.
So, uh, the, the proponent is amendable, but it must be, so kailangan pong i- i- ano natin 'yun, i- um, i- uh, ano specific words, ano specific, ano, para hindi na po mag- maguhula 'yung ating secretariat. That's Honorable Leva?
Anyway, Madam Chair, this is just for second reading.
The purely the amendment.
Inserted, that's why the common exercise of the palanatila po ba 'yun?
Yes, oo, so we'll...
At least, uh, in principle, we agree that we will insert, uh, I, 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 I'm, uh, I feel, uh, I second to the, uh, 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 motion that we will include a declaration of uh, policy and uh, legal basis. And one legal basis is the joint memorandum circular, uh, of the DDM and the DIAN due with regard to the, uh, 20% utilization, which allows our public school facilities in the utilization.
Okay, so we'll just request the assistance, maybe the proponent and the, the sponsor can just confer with the secretariat with regard to the exact wordings for inclusion in the final draft to be approved in the next session, third and final reading.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Paul. So, meron pa po ba? With regard to Section, Section 5, originally Section 4, meron po ba? Can we, can we proceed to Section 6, originally Section 5? This is with agreement na i-a-adjust ulit 'yung ano, 'yung uh, numbering ng sections para ma- ma-in- insert 'yung declaration of policy.
Section 6?
So, kung wala po, Section 7? Section 8, 9, and 10? Wala na po. So, uh, what is the pleasure of, thank you, Honorable Red, the proponent of the, and the author of the ordinance? Meron pa po kayong gustong banggitin?
Uh, so, uh, Madam Presiding Officer, uh, meron namang po tayong mga amendments sa ordinance, pero hindi po po natin pwedeng mai- ano ng, approve for second reading?
We will, we will, but we, we will give it to the sponsoring committee to, to sponsor it? Any motion to close, di, unless may dagdag po po kayo, na, wala naman po. So, with that, what's the pleasure of the sponsoring committee chair?
Madam Chair, uh, there being no other proposed amendments to the, uh, proposed ordinance, uh, I hereby move that uh, the period for amendments be closed, Madam Chair.
The period for amendment is hereby closed?
There being, uh, with the conclusion of the period of interpolation and amendments, Madam Chair, formally move that propos- that proposed ordinance number 16-10, uh, be approved in second reading and consideri- uh, with uh, with the foregoing amendments, Madam Chair, with the proposed amendments.
Thank you, Honorable Caballes. Upon motion of the sponsoring committee chair and with the uh, approval of the proponent, Honorable Red, the proposed ordinance number 16-10 entitled an ordinance providing 2 million pesos financial assistance to each of the six component municipalities in the province of Marinduke to support their respective education-related infrastructure programs and projects, providing guidelines in the availability thereof and for other related purposes, is now approved for second reading with amendments.
And considering each amendment, uh, duly, a clear copy of this is hereby requested to the secretariat for third and final reading in the next session.
The uh, secretariat is hereby requested to please help on the final draft.
The next item in the business for the day is the proposed ordinance 1617. May this representation be recognized for the sponsorship of the said measure?
Proceed, Honorable Leva.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I move that we open the period of uh, interpolation and debate?
The period and interpolation for, the period for interpolation and debate for proposed ordinance number 16-17 is now opened. Anybody with, who may wish to interpolate is recognized?
Since, well, po, since nobody wants to debate with me, I move that we Madam Presiding Officer, I move that we open the period of amendment.
The, the period uh, for interpolation is hereby closed and the uh, period for amendment is now opened.
May I read the title of the ordinance?
Proceed, Honorable Leva.
Reclassifying the plantilla position of nurse 1, salary grade 15 to nurse 2, salary grade 16, under the Santa Cruz District Hospital and providing funds for the purpose. Introduced, uh, it is now authored and is sponsored by this representation and co-authored by the members of the Committee on Human Resources, uh, Labor Unemployment and the Committee on Appropriation. Please just mention the names of these individuals.
Yes, oo, see, in the final approved uh, resolution, let's put the member, the names of every members of the sponsoring committee.
Section 1, reclassification of the position. The plantilla position of nurse 1, salary grade 15 slash 1, under Santa Cruz District Hospital is hereby reclassified to nurse 2, salary grade 16 slash 1, under the same office with the corresponding emoluments and benefits inherent there to verse 1 to Budget Circular Number 2021 dash 2 of the Department of Budget and Management. So, from uh, item number 451, to position of nurse 1, name of incumbent bacon, salary gradient step 15, step 1, 2. Item number is uh, being held as bacon, position nurse 2, name of incumbent bacon, gradient step 1. Appropriation, the corresponding budget, salary, and benefits and compensation and other emoluments attached to the position are hereby directed to be allocated to the reclassified position subject to accounting rules and regulations thereafter and that the same be prepared and made in the regular appropriation for personal services in the annual budget of the provincial government of Marinduke. Section 3, this ordinance shall take effect immediately upon its approval. Any amendment? Hearing none, Madam Presiding Officer, may I move that we close the period of amendment?
The period of amendment is hereby closed. Proceed, Honorable Leva.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I move that we approve on second reading an ordinance entitled an ordinance reclassifying the plantilla position of nurse 1, salary grade 15 to nurse 2, salary grade 16, under the Santa Cruz District Hospital and providing funds for the purpose. I so move.
There is a motion to approve on, on second reading. The ordinance reclassifying the plantilla positions of nurse 1, salary grade 15 to nurse 2, salary grade 16, under Santa Cruz District Hospital and providing funds for the purpose. Any, any, yes, uh, Honorable Caballes, what's the manifestation?
I second the motion, Paul.
Okay, Julie seconded by Honorable Caballes. Any objection? The chair hears none. The proposed ordinance as read is now approved for the second reading.
And let the same, the clean copy, approved copy of the same be punished and be considered for third and final reading in the next session.
Our good secretariat kindly take note of the request.
The next item in the business for the day is the supplemental budget number 3. May this representation ask that we recognize the chairperson of the committee on appropriation for the sponsorship of the said measure?
Yes, Honorable Caballes, Chair of the Committee on Appropriation.
Thank you po, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, as the chairperson of the concerned committee, uh, I hereby formally move uh, for the adoption and approval of the general fund supplemental budget number 3, curriculum year 2022, involving the amount of 71,478,427 pesos and 731,800 pesos for Marindukenyo Sand and gravel economic enterprise respectively for the operation of the provincial government of Marinduke, for information, eh, of Marinduke, Madam Chair.
Is there any, any second to the, the motion of the chair of the committee on appropriation? Julie seconded by Honorable Rehano. Any objection? The chair hears none. Again, let it be noted on record that uh, the, the uh, body has thoroughly, uh, discussed already every item included in the supplemental budget. When does sangguyang panalawigan approve the supplemental app? When does Sangunyang Panlalawigan approve the supplemental appropriations that are included in supplemental budget number three? Does, uh, no more, uh, further deliberation? Yes, Honorable Leva?
Just to be placed in record, Madam Say, uh, Madam Chair, that the output of this supplemental budget is, uh, general appropriations ordinance, and for that purpose, uh, the same has been, uh, discussed with, and we gone through with the period of amendment and the period of debate and interpolation, and it was, for the record, approved on second reading, and since there's no amendment, subsequently it was approved on third and final reading.
Noted. Uh, we are just trying to make it, uh, clear dahil nakarecord po ang ating session at baka magtakat sila na nag-aapprove tayo ng supplemental budget number three involving seventy-one million without much, uh, discussion. So we are just explaining na ito ay supplemental budget number three na inakabase naman sa lahat ng approved, uh, appropriation, uh, supplemental appropriation, uh, resolutions that we previously, uh, approved already and deliberated meticulously. So meron, it has been moved and Julie seconded for the approval of supplemental budget number three for various accounts based on previously approved appropriation ordinance, supplementary appropriation ordinance amounting to seventy-one million, four hundred seventy-eight thousand, four hundred twenty-seven pesos. Is there any, any objection? The Chair hears none. Thus, uh, supplemental budget number three for various accounts amounting to seventy-one million, four hundred seventy-eight thousand, four hundred twenty-seven pesos is now approved.
The next item in the business for the day.
Just, um, manifestation also that the appropriation for capital outlay and the M O O E of the S P Legislative that are included in the supplemental budget number three will be, uh, distributed, uh, equally among the members of the office.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Also, Madam Chair, our wish to have a paperless, uh, uh, session is included in this, uh, the appropriation of four mil, million pesos.
Yes, thus hopefully by first quarter of, uh, next year, we have, we will be starting already the, uh, paperless sessions and some transactions in the office of the Sangunyang Panlalawigan. Yes, proceed, Honorable Leva.
May I ask that we recognize, uh, the Chairperson of the Committee on Appropriation for item number four under the, uh, Communications and Petitions?
Yes, Honorable Cabalias.
Madam Chair, it is the pleasure of this representation that the resolution.
Ay, Madam, uh, I stand corrected, Madam Chair. Um, before we recognize the Honorable Chairperson of the Committee on Appropriation, maybe I ask that we recognize first the Chairperson of the Committee on Health for item number one of the Communications and Petitions?
Yes, Honorable, uh, Dindin Opis Mercado.
Thank you, Vice Governor. I move for the adoption and approval granting an authority to the Governor to enter into Omoa with D O H C H D Memaropa regarding the Medical Assistance for Indigent Patients Program, M A I P P for the period January one, twenty twenty-two to March thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. I saw move, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Number one. Okay, thank you, Honorable, uh, Dindin Opis Mercado, Chairperson of the Committee on, uh, Health. Any, uh, any second to the motion? Julie seconded, any objection? The Chair hears none. Thus, the res, the resolution providing, granting authority to the Honorable Governor Pesbitero Velasco Junior to enter into Omoa on behalf of the province with D O H C H D Memaropa regarding the Medical Assistance for Indigent Patients Program for the period January one, twenty twenty-two to March thirty-one, twenty twenty-three is now approved.
May I ask that we recognize the Chairperson of the Committee on Appropriation for the sponsorship of item number four under the Communication and Petition?
Honorable Cabalias.
Madam Chair, it is the pleasure of this presentation that, uh, the body adopt, approves and adopt a resolution, uh, approving the request for the reverberation of appropriation of the amount of one hundred fifty thousand pesos from the Capital Outlay Account, Office Equipment, General Admins, General Admin and Reproporate to Capital Outlay Account Twenty Twenty Two Furniture and Fixtures intended for the payments of additional furniture for admin building of the provincial agriculture office, Madam Chair.
Any second to that motion? Julie seconded, any objection? The Chair hears none. Thus, a resolution reverting the amount of one hundred fifty thousand pesos from Capital Outlay Account to Office Equipment, General Administration and Reproporate to Capital Outlay Account Twenty Twenty Two Furniture and Fixtures under the, uh, Provincial Agriculture Office intended for the payments of additional furniture for administ, admin building of the provincial agriculture office is now approved.
Madam Chair, may this representation be recognized? For item number two of the municipal ordinance as per view of the board. Madam Chair, may I ask that we adopt a resolution declaring municipal ordinance number two-six-four series of twenty twenty-two of the municipality of Buenavista entitled an ordinance mandating business establishment operating within that territorial jurisdiction of Buenavista, Marinduke to install a closed circuit TV system and prescribing penalties for violation thereof as valid and within the power of the Sangunyang Bayan to enact. I saw move.
Is there any second to the motion by Honorable Leva? Julie seconded, any objection? The Chair hears none. With that, municipal ordinance number two-six-four, a resolution declaring municipal ordinance number two-six-four series of twenty twenty-two of the municipality of Buenavista entitled ordinance mandating business establishments operating within the territorial jurisdiction of Buenavista, Marinduke to install a closed circuit television CCTV system and providing penalties for violation thereof is declared valid and operative and within the authority of the said L G U to enact is now approved.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I move for an adoption of a resolution declaring municipal ordinance number two-six-six series of twenty twenty-two of the municipality of Buenavista entitled an ordinance institutionalizing Sing Brigada Escuela of the Department of Education in Buenavista, Marinduke creating a task force and providing funds therefore as valid and within the power of the Sangunyang Bayan to enact. I saw move, Madam Presiding Officer.
Uh, just, just a query, uh, they are declaring it, they are institutionalizing a national program?
Maybe the word is a localizing.
Localizing or maybe it's the support that they are giving to the Brigada Escuela because it is already institutionalized. So, pero can we?
Can, uh, we will, it is within their power to enact, but we will, uh, give a recommendation that instead of, uh, using the word institutionalizing, it's just local, uh, localizing the implementation of the Brigada Escuela.
Yeah, as, as a recommendation.
As a recommendation. It will be part of the enabling, uh, resolution, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable, uh, Leva. Uh, is there any second to the motion with some additional suggestion to the L G U? Julie seconded, any, any objection? The Chair hears none. Thus, uh, a resolution declaring municipal ordinance number two-six-six series of twenty twenty-two of the municipality of Buenavista entitled an ordinance institutionalizing, but we are suggesting that it be termed localizing Brigada Escuela of the Department of Education in Buenavista, Marinduke creating a task force and providing funds therefore, uh, is now declared valid operative and within the authority of the said L G U to enact.
Madam Chair, may I move that we adopt a resolution earnestly requesting the Sangunyang Barangay of Banban and the Sangunyang Bayan of Buak to declare Sitio Dangan, Barangay Banban, Buak, this province as no built zone. I saw move, Madam Presiding Officer.
There is a motion as an offshoot of the adopted committee report, there is a motion from, uh, Honorable Leva, is there any second to that? Julie seconded, any objection? The Chair hears none. Thus, a resolution requesting the barang, the Sangunyang Barangay of Banban and the...
Sangunyang Bayan of Buak.
Sangunyang Bayan of Buak to declare Sitio Dangan, Barangay Banban, Buak as a no-go zone in the province of Marinduke is now approved.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I move for adoption of a resolution earnestly requesting the provincial engineering office, the provincial disaster management office, the municipal disaster risk reduction and management office of Buak, and the Department of Public Works and Highway, Marinduke District Engineering, uh, District to conduct a joint dredging activity in the waterways of Sitio Dangan, Barangay Banban as a short-term solution to the flooding of the said area. I saw move, Madam Chair.
Any second to the motion? Julie seconded by Honorable Limpiada. Uh, is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Thus, a resolution earnestly requesting the provincial engineering office, the P D R R M O, the M D R R M O of Buak and the D P W H Mardello to conduct a joint dredging activity in the waterways of Sitio Dangan, Barangay Banban as a short-term solution to the flooding of the said area is now approved.
Madam Chair, may I move that we adopt a resolution earnestly requesting the Department of Public Works and Highway, Marinduke District Engineering Office to allocate funds amounting to fifty million pesos under the General Appropriations Act intended for the construction, repair, improvement of all flood control systems in the Sitio, in Barangay Banban, municipality of Buak, this province. I saw move.
Before we, we, uh, adopt it, shall we address the request to the Mardello, D P W H, or allocation of funds is a congressional act and the address?
Madam Chair, can we, uh, address the same to the Honorable Congressman, Lord Alan Velasco?
I, I think it, it will be appropriate that way because allocation of funds is a congressional function.
So may I...
And D P W H can just recommend?
Uh, Ma, Ma, Madam Chair, uh, may I replace my, uh, requesting the D P W H to prioritize the construction, repair, and improvement of flood control system in the, in Sitio Dangan, Barangay Banban, Buak, this province? One resolution, then another resolution is a resolution requesting the intervention of the Honorable Congressman, Lord Alan Velasco to allocate funds amounting to fifty million pesos under the General Appropriations Act intended for the construction, repair, improvement of all flood control system in Sitio Dangan, Barangay Banban, Buak, this province. So you, uh, omnibus motion, Madam Chair, for two, uh, uh, resolutions of the same intention?
There is an omnibus, uh, motion, uh, uh, moved by the, by the, uh, by Honorable Leva, uh, including two proposed ordinance that addressed the, uh, needed dredging in the flood control activity in Sitio Dangan as, as mentioned. Is there any second to the motion? Julie seconded, any objection? Uh, Ju, uh, since there is no objection, the omnibus motion as mentioned, addressed to D P W H Mardello and at the same time to, uh, the House of Representatives through Marinduke Representative Congressman, Lord Alan Kinda Velasco is now approved.
Madam Chair, uh, may I ask that we recognize the Chairperson of the Committee on Civil Society Organization for, uh, the sponsorship of a resolution under committee report number forty-four dash twenty-two.
Yes, Honorable Rehano?
Thank you, uh, Madam Presiding Officer. As per, uh, recommendation, na, and we have authently evaluate the document submitted by the, uh, by the Kalipunan ng mga kababaihan ng Masiga, uh, Gasan, I hereby recommend for this august body for the approval, uh, for accreditation of the Kalipunan ng mga kababaihan ng Masiga, uh, Gasan chapter.
So Honorable, Honorable Mercy Rehano is moving for the adoption of a resolution accrediting Kalipunan ng mga kababaihan, Masiga, Gasan chapter as an accredited organization of the provincial government. Is there any second to the motion? Julie seconded, Honorable, by Honorable Cabalias, Honorable N. Cabo, Honorable Limpiada, any objection? The Chair hears none. Thus, a resolution providing accreditation to the Kalipunan ng mga kababaihan, Masiga, Gasan chapter is now approved.
That's all, Madam Presiding Officer, for the business for the day portion of today's session. We don't have any unassigned business. Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn until October twenty-one at ten a.m. at the S P Session Hall. I saw move.
The session is adjourned until, until, uh, October twenty-one at ten o'clock in the morning. The session is adjourned.